Let's go with this. This is our Weir County Board of Commissioners Work Session, Bundy Mark Sullivan, 24, 3:30. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Burst, Steve Wood. Let me call a role for first. Burst.
President.
Mr. Pope.
President.
Mr. Lucas here. And District Ford's vacant. Chairman's here. I'm gonna ask Mr. Burst, Steve Wood, to lead us in prayer for the start.
My ears. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day that you've made. We were rejoicing and be glad in it. We thank and praise you, O God, for life, health, and strength. We pray, God, that you will bless us and we can liberate the business of this county, O God. Give us the right things to say, when to say it and how to say it. Let it be done with the amen, O God. We pray that you will continue to bless this community and continue to bless our world in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice of God.
We got a, don't have anything here on it, but we think the judge has got a pointy for the vacant seat. And if you would, Kevin, Judge, would you please come up and throw it off?
I'm appointing a new chairman as of today. He's sworn in now and take office with Samuel A. Kent Hendricks and his nickname Sammy, but everybody will know him as Sammy. So Sammy, if you would come forward, I'll go ahead and give you the oath. We'll raise your right hand. This is the State of Georgia official oath, County Commissioner, District Four. State of Georgia, Weir County. I, picture name.
Samuel A. Hendricks, Jr.
You solemnly swear that I will well and truly discharge the duties of Commissioner of Weir County, Georgia, in all matters which require my official action to the best of my knowledge and skill, and I will so as my judgment will be most conducive to the welfare and best interests of the county. I have been the resident therefore thereof for the time required by the Constitution and laws of this state. I do further solemnly swear I affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States or any other state or any foreign state which I am prohibited from holding by the laws of the State of Georgia. And I am further qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution of the United States and the laws of Georgia, and I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, so help me God. I will. Okay. I'll go ahead and give you your loyalty oath. Raise your right hand again. State of Georgia, loyalty oath, State of Georgia, County of Weir. I.
I, Samuel A. Hendricks, Jr.
As such from Weir County and being an employee of Weir County and a recipient of public funds for services rendered, as such employee, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia, so help me God. I will. Okay. Here's your signature. It's not here? him over to you.
Okay. Come on up here.
Okay. Thank you.
You come on up here. Come on up here.
How you doing, sir?
All right, we have some guest speakers. And I think we got several of them here. Let's get them behind us. Ms. Penny?
Yes, Penny Crumley, 4014 Griffin Road. And I would just like to ask, where are we on Grayden, I mean paving Griffin Road? Do we have bids or?
Okay. We have that on the list, don't we? Scott?
Yes, sir. At this point, we don't have official action approving for to pave that road unless the county so chooses at this point. Now, I think there's like two or three others too, along with Griffin, that we would need official county vote to move in that direction.
We, Penny, where we add on it, I think it's really, we was gonna move some roads around, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to right now. And the money is short on some of it. I found that we're gonna have to, I don't really know how to explain it, but we do wanna move some of those roads that maybe don't, that can get by without being paved, and some of the ones that need it more than us. Leonard and I thought about that a little bit about, one time about changing some of that around, you know. But we're gonna have to look further into it, but that's about really all I can tell you on it. Unless somebody else has got something more on it. But we working on it though. And I'm glad you come up, Anthony. I really am. Okay, Bob. Lucy. Who's that on? It's about a RV park.
Yes, the one that they're building up in Pebble Hill. They're putting, they're trying, somebody's trying to put it in. And there was nothing posted that says they're gonna do that. And I don't know who owns the property or whatever, but they got five pads in there. They cleared, they cleared the lot, put five pads in there. There'd been nothing posted. This meeting, they're supposed to bring it up. There was nothing posted about this meeting. I found out at two o'clock this afternoon, I was at work, my neighbor called me. And this is in the residential up there, right, right around the corner from my neighbors. And it's all residential, and they want RV, RV park there?
You don't want no parking there, do you? You don't want parking there, do you?
I don't want the park? No. What is it gonna do to my value of our houses?
Yeah.
And who's gonna, who's moving in there? How long can they stay? Can they stay two, three years? Does it gotta move every six months?
Excuse me, I have a question. What area are you talking about? Because I don't have any idea what you're talking about.
It's, uh. It's that there's.
Augusta Springs Road.
That's the one we were talking about last time. Yeah. Went out there, Pebble Hill.
It's up in Pebble Hill.
Pebble Hill.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with it, I just wanted to know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's up on Augusta Springs up there. And nobody kinda knew anything about it. All of a sudden, the guy cleared the lot. We thought, okay, they're putting, because he pulled out the trailer that was on there, a house trailer. And we thought they were putting another house trailer. And all of a sudden, they put in pads and stuff, and we heard that through the grapevine that this guy's putting in RV park. It's a residential area. Wouldn't that be a business? Can I build apartments on my property? I got a half acre.
Jimbo, can you come up and shed some light on that chief, please?
We done turned that down.
Yeah, oh, it's on Augusta Springs. We got word that they, a guy who blew the trailer, he put in four pads, like he's put his RV sites. So he should stop work on it because it doesn't meet the RV ordinance anymore. I think he has a few acres there, two acres, whatever, acre. Maybe altogether, I'm not sure. But it doesn't have a minimum of five acres that would take to permit a RV park.
So it's stopped?
So it's stopped at this point.
So it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be put in?
And the, I'm sorry, I spoke to the owner of the property and he was willing to come up and speak with the commission because there's nothing I can do to help him because it'd be breaking the laws, the regs. And he wants to, he was talking about that he'd already bought the boxes before the ordinance took place. He called our office or somebody, he said, called our office and asked how many tank, how many RVs did he put on the tank? And I thought we might, if we did, we might have given a terrible answer, albeit he put four RVs on the tank, not knowing where it was at or anything. And, but he's, you know, he wanted to know if he could have vested interest because he spent some money before the ordinance passed. I told him, I can't make that decision because usually vested interest is done by collaboration with us, commission, the county attorney. And usually, when you got that, you spent like monies on prepared plans, buying land and so forth. And then you wanna ask about grandfather, I said, well, grandfather normally takes an application for me to say it's grandfather. It takes an application. He made my office before the ordinance was adopted.
And that didn't happen, that didn't take place?
It has not taken place. So, Mr., I'm sorry, is it Mr. Corbin? What's your?
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore.
Doug Moore, I'm sorry, Mr. Moore. Anyway, he, I advise him he has to come talk to the commission. Either the commission has to change the law or the county attorney will advise that he has vested interest or he can proceed on. I said, I can't make that decision, so.
Who is, who is the guy that's wanting to put in the motorhome park? I mean, RVs are, who?
David Moore.
David.
Doug, is he here?
It's been a long, but he's here.
Is he here for? Well, we got a Ryan Dowell too. Ryan, Ryan Deal.
It's only a regular meeting agenda, number five.
He might not be here until five, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So, vested interest, what does that mean? That he spent money on these pads and stuff?
Yeah, well, you have to spend, consider by the money, and that'd be more answered by the county attorney, what vested interest, what constitutes vested interest.
But how do you say you got vested interest when he's building something that he wasn't permitted to build right now?
Well, he's arguing that he started before the, the regs was done, but that's not for me to turn, he argued that.
Couple weeks ago.
I mean, I'm just saying what he said, so.
I live in a neighborhood.
And that's, that's why we're here.
Okay. Sir, I would ask that y'all and everybody that's gonna speak against this thing going up, I believe the gentleman's gonna be here at five o'clock.
Yeah, he's gonna be in the meeting.
Till the meeting, till five. Then that'd be a good thing.
Okay.
I mean, I can't, I can't tell y'all what to do, but.
In the me.
You gotta write, be here at five o'clock.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. James.
Yeah, hold on, James.
In the meantime, I wanna make sure I'm understanding, the gentleman started putting these pads and all this stuff in, he didn't get any kind of permit?
Crushed asphalt, right?
He didn't get, didn't get any kind of permit or clearance from your office?
Right.
So y'all issued that stop order?
We issued stop work order once we got word that that's what was going on. And they had, while they're out there, I think the building inspector made a decision. He had some crushed asphalt right around the driveway that was dumped, so you let him put that on the pad to get it up from the driveway, so.
We can talk all day, but if it's, if it's wrong to do it, then just go tell him to shut it down. We ain't gonna do that.
We did.
I mean, we ain't got to go to everybody and tell everybody this, that, and the other. This talk just goes that down, that's like wind.
We shut it down, so.
If you're supposed to stop him, James, stop it.
We did.
He did. He stopped it.
But it's his constitution's right to come talk to y'all.
Ryan Deal, he's here for the same thing.
Yes, Ryan Deal, 3682 Augusta Springs Drive, Waycross, Georgia. I'm here to talk for the residents of Augusta Springs and Neighbors Drive. We heard he was coming back to maybe try to re-change that ordinance, so we wanted to come voice our opinions.
Okay.
And as a resident of the area, my neighbors and I have concerns about having a campground in our neighborhood. We live in a nice quiet place and don't want a campground in our front and backyard. Many of the residents in the area have spoken to me about how they feel. Many of them are here tonight. As of now, there are four paved spots across from my home. If it worked out, I'm sure the owner would move the other two homes that he owns and add eight more camping spots. There'll be a lot of extra traffic in our small neighborhood where many children play. I don't have anything against having a camper or people that have them. We just don't want a trailer park out there. The owner doesn't have out there, so he doesn't mind. It seems that the owner has done some homework and knows that he can only put four campers on one second tank. Many people have asked him what he was doing on the property with no direct answer. If he doesn't mind the campers, he can do this at his house in his front yard where he owns twenty acres.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. I think we're gonna take care of that. James knows what to do with it. If he don't qualify, he gotta go. Let's go on to agenda items. Any new agenda items? Let's go to the resolution for 20, a, resolution 2024-04, approve ACCG intern grant program agreement.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this is a approval of a grant agreement with ACCG to fund an intern during the months of May through, actually, May through August. And they will refund us the amount to hire at fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay.
So, the way it stands now, we've got it pointed out, this person will work primarily in records retention and also have exposure to other departments to try to learn as much as they can about county government.
Okay.
Yeah. They do this every year. Well, they just started doing this about three years ago, so this, evidently, they have the funding set aside to do this more.
Those human resources needs right now.
No, there's actually a grant that's offered through ACCG, and you had to come up with a particular project, and it's not actually through human resources, but it's one that I actually applied for. And this is a first-time grant for county, that you had to be a certain size, and it was a certain, that you had never applied for a grant through this foundation, the board, this ACCG civic affairs.
All right, where are we gonna use these people at?
It's actually gonna be through Planning and Coats. That's the one I was telling you about this morning.
Planning and Coats.
Planning and Coats.
Yes, sir. Where it's taking the old records that were transferred over and putting them on digital, taking the old records.
Okay.
That they had that were just paper and putting it on the computer, where it can be accessed, and it will give the full history of like a road closure or an address, and it can be used by tax assessor's office and Planning and Coats.
Okay.
It'll go into a database.
They can be used in other departments too, if they agree.
It's actually a particular project, and you have to line it out, and they will come, ACCG will actually come and monitor and see that they are doing what you said they were doing.
Okay. All right. Mr. Burst?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I guess kudos to Ms. Brooks, because she was the one that initiated this and filed the application, and I think it's a great thing, and I think it speaks well of her and her foresight, you know, for this commission in this county. Because this is something, this intern will get in there, like she said, with the record retention and change the digital files and all. And so I think it's commendable on her part to do that, and it won't really cost us anything because they're gonna reimburse us by for that cost.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Any more on it?
Just one, is it just gonna be one or two?
We only got one.
Just got one. Okay, I'll look at that.
Is that a thing for a whole year?
No, it's only, we only can have them for two hundred hours.
Oh, just.
So it's just a college intern.
All right, any more discussion? Anything else? Let's carry it over to the meeting. All right. Resolution 2024-05, approve the MOU with the city of Waycross.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this is a resolution approving the MOU with the city of Waycross for recreational programs and services. At Bailey Street Park, Memorial Park, we had a committee that was made up of two commissioners, Commissioner Burst and Commissioner Pope. And so they looked at this, and if they wanna speak to it, we can, but this is to approve that MOU. Once it's approved by the county, then we'll send it over to the city for their signatures.
Y'all got anything on that? Hope?
Well, the city received a over two million dollar grant to start recreation programs within the city, so we were thinking that this would be a good time. They wanna do some work in both Memorial and Bailey Street Park. This would give this back to them. We would still operate swimming pool, but this would let them tie these two parks into their upcoming program while they're in the planning stage.
And just to piggyback on what he was saying there, and that the pool issue, that'd be for only this year. After this year, then, if this agreement is signed by the city, then they will take over the full operation of the Bailey Street and Memorial Park. And I'm hoping and praying that they will find some kind of way to be able to keep the pool there. But after, what is December the 31st, I believe it is?
Yes, sir.
Then if everything goes well, then they would turn it over, and it's something they really wanna do, and just hope they can be able to keep the pool there. And, but again, this pool will just be our last year operating it right now if this agreement goes through.
Feeling is to, the funds we've been spending on the two parks, to shift that over to trimming earth for that upkeep and more programs. So it should fit together nicely.
Okay. Any more? Let's carry it over. Okay. See, resolution 2024-06, approve the YMCA pool management agreement for the Bailey Street Pool.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this agenda item here is associated with the one that was just mentioned. This is an agreement or a resolution to approve the agreement with the YMCA for management services of the pool in amount of about, well, in amount of twelve thousand dollars. They've done this, did it last year, and because we had some issues with the pool, we didn't, we didn't open it all the time that we would, thought we were gonna be able to open it. So if we're able to, if they're able to get the lifeguards and be able to put that together, then they'll start, May 28th, I believe is the date, and go through the end of August.
Okay. Okay.
To beginning of August, excuse me, May twenty-seventh through August third.
Okay, is any more discussion on it? Any of y'all got anything on it? Mr. Burris? Is this, if we put all this together, what we have talked about is letting the city take care of all of this recreation.
Yes, sir.
This, this should get, get us out of this, hasn't it?
Right, it actually, we'll, we'll end the services there, terminate the services at the end of this calendar year. So the county will, will continue to do what it's done these many years and then ended at the end of this calendar year.
Okay.
Yes. And so the, this agreement with YMCA, um, allows them to provide the services as far as having lifeguards on duty. And, uh, that's one of the things that we have to have. The, the other requirement there is to have security, full-time security. And the agreement, uh, the MOU is that the city of Waycross, uh, would supply the security for the pool.
Okay. Do we have a board of directors for the, uh, recreation?
We did have, um, I think there was six or seven members and right before COVID, we had three of them to resign. Uh, and because of COVID, we never started it back, but that would be something that the commission, if you wanted to, if the commission so desired to, to, uh, to bring that back and get one started again, we'd have to get some appointees for the committee.
Well, I don't know a whole lot about the recreation. I mean, you know, and I don't, I don't know, what, what I, I'd like to have a committee to come up and do a study of whatever they wanna do. Then we might could make better recommendations as to what we would do. Because some of us up here, we don't play for a living, you know, we, we got to work and we don't know a whole lot about playing. So we need a, a committee that tell us about it, you know, tell us what they want, what they need.
We had, when we had one, it was, it was fair, fairly active, uh, committee as far as more of an advisory capacity. Uh, and then they would bring recommendations back to the county commission for, for changes or modifications or things of that nature.
Mr. Chairman, I've been contacted over the weekend about that very thing.
Have you?
Yes, sir. And, uh, I believe the, the young lady that I spoke with said that there was no interest. Well, she sent me a list of names of interested people that would volunteer to be on that board because they really want it back.
Well, it's kinda, it's kinda, the recreation department is kinda dying off. You know, and I mean, and if you don't have a board there to plan some stuff and, and, and keep all the kids involved and then what they, they got travel ball and stuff like that, and that's a lot of money that a lot of parents can't afford.
Right.
That's right, yeah. We need, I think we need a committee then, what do we have to do to do that?
I'll get an updated list from Lance, he may be in here, I don't know if he is, but if, I'll get an updated list of the ones that we had and contact them to see if they're still interested, and then I think there was three vacancies on that board, on that advisory board.
I can give you several names.
And then we can come up with some names and get those appointed fairly quickly.
Yes, sir. And then letting them come to us and tell us what they found, you know, and we, we feel better about it, I think. How you feel about that?
Yeah, the county code specifies how the board is set up, so it's already in, in, um, in writing, all we gotta do is put people in there.
Okay. County code fifty, I believe.
And I've had calls like Timmy has for, um, Walter, get that board going again.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, I wanna throw cold water on top by the recreation board and the, uh, rate department. But my understanding is that, and like I say, I'm willing to try to go what's ever gonna benefit the kids, but they said that a lot of the boards, whenever they have these advisory boards or whatever, they're kinda limited in nature because once the people that, that, when their kids are participating, they're real active, but then once the kids are out of that program, then they gone. And then you have people that, you know, you got a rate department out there, you got a rate director. And the advisory board sometime maybe wanna kinda get out the lane sometime, like I say, I don't know because I haven't ever been on one of the boards, but it's kinda sometimes be confusing, and I talk to people in other communities and they say that sometime that causes a problem with the advisory board when they get in there, when they start trying to really kinda take over the running and operation of the rate department.
Well, I believe we got it spelled out, so.
You know.
It, it's spelled out in our, our policy, that the rules and regs they have to follow and they have to report directly back to us.
Okay.
So it's already set up that way.
Like I said, whatever gonna benefit the kids and gonna be in the business, the kids are my offer that a hundred percent.
Absolutely.
All right.
I was on the board for several years, uh, until I became a judge. And I was on that board for several years and we had a big, uh, place in the planning on trimming earth and all that stuff. So it is a very good thing, we need a good board.
Yeah. That's why I feel better about it if we had a board to come and, uh, recommend what we, we need to do. I, I feel better about it if we, we did have a board.
Judge, when you were on there, did y'all have good response and people showed up and they were there and?
We had a lot of, a lot of good response and, and, uh, parents were involved with the board too. They came and talked to the board and everything, so it was good for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any more on that? No, let's carry them over. All right. This is, uh, D, resolutions twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, approve Ware County retirement. This is a schedule amendment.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this is in the, the item that was discussed during the retreat. Um, the, uh, the vesting schedule currently for the city, uh, excuse me, county, Ware County employees is set now at ten years. The vesting schedule is basically the time period that, uh, full vesting in the retirement account, um, is allowed. So you have to be a full-time, the way it stands now, you have to be a full-time, uh, employee for ten years to be able to qualify for all of your money that's been put into your retirement account. Years ago, it was set at five and it was moved to ten, um, and with some plan and sometime later from what I was told, to move it back to five. Um, and so this is what, this is what this is concerning. There's an email in there on page two of that item, um, from our representative with ACCG with, um, stating that most of the plans that they, um, administer are set at five years rather than ten years. So that's one of the reasons too why, why we're trying to move it back to five.
I've had one employee.
Even at four, but this is one for five years.
I've had one employee that asked me, is this concerning that same thing, I think I spoke with you about him. He, I won't call his name, but he's wanting to pull his money out of the, he's been here forty years.
Yes, sir.
And he wanted to pull half of it out, he wants to remodel his house or something.
That I would have to find out.
He did that.
I, I'm not sure of that, but I would have to find out.
I believe they have to resign.
That's, as far as, that is actually, as, um, Jennifer reminded me, that's a different issue, but it, it pertains to the same, same thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
I believe they have to resign or retire, don't they, Mr. Manager?
Well, he's owning it to retire.
I'm pretty sure, but I'll, I'll check into that, because of retirement age.
Right.
Yeah, and I think he, the one we were talking about is retirement age.
Yeah, he's, but he don't wanna leave really, he wants to stay on.
I believe according to the regulations, federal regulations, I believe according to the regulations, the federal regulations, they have to resign or retire to pull it.
This is part of the recommendations on the, um, personnel policy board that Leonard and I are serving on. This is one of the, one of the items that came up, um, kind of the feeling that nowadays, people don't, a lot of employees don't stay one place for ten years. So I'm thinking that an employee, if they work five years to work on their retirement, then if they go somewhere else, they should get that retirement that, that they worked for. This would just give them more opportunity to use the money that they have worked for, employees.
Okay. All right, any more on it?
There is a thing, when, when you reach age seventy, you can draw money out of your account. So I've been involved in that, so I know how that works.
That, that was what he was wanting to know, could he draw some out of his retirement?
You can do that for age seventy.
At, at, at age what?
Seventy.
Seventy. Okay.
He made it, that's the, uh, county retirement plan, she can explain all this to you. But, uh, that's, that age is seventy years later.
Okay. All right, I'll get it. Any more on it?
I don't wanna put HR to rate on spot, but could you enlighten us just a little bit more on that, Ms. Bailey? I mean, Ms. Young, as to.
So as to your question, um, it really depends on if the employee was on the old pension plan, which if he's been here forty years, he probably was on the old pension plan. The plan we have now is different. The retirement plan is what Scott has on the agenda. So on the old pension plan, there are provisions for employees who are still currently employed to start getting money out of that pension plan. Um, so whoever it is, if you just haven't called my office, I'll direct them to the right, to the right place.
I should, I'll tell him, man.
Um, and as far as the, what's on the agenda, um, Scott's information is correct, and actually, the, all the counties that ACCG manages, we are the only county who still has ten-year vesting. Every other county that they manage is on four or five-year vesting. So I think it's a, a good move for us to pop, uh, pull it back and just get people in center, come on board.
Well, you know, there, Mr. Chairman, if you will, uh, I read, run across some of the things email Scott sent out. Uh, ACCG just approved the, they moved it from two years to three years when it comes to law enforcement, first responders, when we put all the money into training them and they leave with, within that twenty-four months. Now ACCG, ACCG has extended that to thirty-six months. So now they, if we have hired them at Sheriff Department or whatever, we put them through training. If they stay two years, whatever department they go to has to pay us for that last year, has to refund us the money. So, and that's the department that they leave us if they don't hit that thirty-six month criteria. So it was raised from twenty-four to thirty-six, I thought that was a real good thing, excellent thing.
Yeah. Making some good moves.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that would also kinda go hand in hand with what you're explaining now, with us being the only one still ten. Moving it back to five, that would kinda go hand in hand with that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Trey. Okay, is any more on that? Carry that over. Okay, E, airport property easement for Georgia Power.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is an easement, um, to be granted to Georgia Power um, for the purpose of installing an underground, uh, or it's an underground power to the, uh, to the transformer there at the airport for the charging stations of the, the beta, or the beta charging stations for electric vehicles. And, um, their copy of it or a, a design of it's in the very back to get an idea of what they're looking at doing. But it is an underground easement, uh, in order to get to the, uh, the transformer on property there. It is on airport property, it is on airport property.
It is all on airport property.
Is it inside the fence?
Is that where they gonna, is this, it's gonna be charging for, just for the vehicles there or the?
Yes, sir, there's, if I'm not mistaken, there is two for vehicles and one for aircraft, if I'm not mistaken. Brandon, is that, is Brandon here?
Sir, yes, sir.
Isn't that right?
They got a left and a right plane now.
Uh, two for, two, two for veh, vehicles and one is for aircraft, that's what I thought.
They tell them they won't.
It's been a long time.
So two and one?
Huh?
Yes, sir.
And we were the only one that Governor Kent picked besides Savannah, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sir.
We were the only location that Governor Kent picked besides Savannah, it was us and Savannah that was picked for that, is that correct?
Uh, I think this is something different, this is the beta program and, uh, we, we are on the front end of it. Uh, I think the beta group is a private company. Don't remember any communications from the governor's office on that, but I do know that Augusta Airport was another one that, uh, they might actually be a little further ahead than we are, um, at Augusta Airport. But, uh, we, I think we are, we were one of the first ones in the state, yes, sir.
Only question I will have on this, Mr. County Manager, Mr. Brandon. Mr. Chairman, uh, Georgia Power having this easement, are they gonna have a key to our gate?
They got a key to the gate anyway, I imagine.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because they've cut a key, they've cut a lock on one of my pieces of property and.
If they got a power line hanging around there, they got a key to it.
Well, their power line's not on my property, it's on the person behind their property, but they cut the lock on my fence.
Yeah.
And we, uh, we had a little dispute about that. That's the reason I'm asking, are they gonna have a key, because I don't wanna cut in our property.
So I have to look into, Commissioner?
Brandon, are there airport engineers involved in this?
Yes, sir.
They've approved it?
Yes, sir, I shot them an email when we first got that, asked them about, you know, FAA issues or if there are any issues they may have with it, if they did see anything.
Good deal.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more, thank you, Brandon. I think Georgia Power has a key to everything, they got them all over the hunting club and everywhere else.
Make sure they have one of my things, they just cut the lock.
Yep. They can go wherever they want. Okay, we carry it over. F, comprehensive transportation plan update proposal.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a proposal, uh, that is, uh, from Atlas, is one we received, uh, I think maybe about a month, about a year ago. Um, this is to update our current two thousand, um, comprehensive transportation plan, um, based on what was given to us. Um, it's one of the things that we have found out over a period of years that we have a tendency to, to be able to, um, gain more attention when it comes to grants and programs and, and improvements to our transportation system. Um, and it's something that we're, as a staff, we're definitely recommending it because it always comes back to our transportation plan when we're talking about DOT or, um, some of the, uh, federal grant programs that are out there. Um, they, they have a tendency to, to pay attention to the communities that have these plans in place because they know the professionals and the experts have studied those situations and have come back with recommendations. And so, uh, with all that, I think it's one of the things, it's, it is pricey, uh, because you're looking at at least a year's pro, uh, process, probably even more. And, uh, right now, the, the price that they submitted is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that goes along with all the different, um, parts of that where they get the community involved in public hearings and so forth. And it, it's elaborate process, but it's something that, that most of the progressive communities go after only because of the situation with transportation. With Waycross and Ware County experiencing what we are now, um, ever since two thousand, it's changed considerably. And I think this would be a way to readdress some of those problems and even more than what we have now. Um, Commissioner Burris asked a good question too, uh, this morning, I think it was, that with the existing plan from year two thousand, would some of those things be part of this one, and I, I would suspect so. Uh, but also too, I think they would take those ideas and those, uh, results from that and mesh it into the new one because there could be better and, and different ways of solving some of the trans, uh, transportation problems. So it's, um, it's one of those necessities, it's, it's a, it's a big price, but it's also a big undertaking too. Because you'll, they'll sub out probably two or three aspects of this to other, uh, subcontractors, uh, that are in the transportation business. And, um, and then we'll have, they'll make up a committee of the city and the county, uh, along with some citizens and, um, have, um, meetings that way to, to gain some insight and comments and knowledge of, of the problems that we're having now.
Has the city commission agreed to be part of this study and do the city?
They haven't, I talked with, uh, the city manager by, by email this afternoon and he said that they, he's planning on attending the five o'clock meeting. I don't know if any of the representatives with the city beyond him would be here or not. But I did forward all this information to him last week and told him it would be on our agenda to, uh, to be discussed.
Here, this is divided into six sections, would all six be worked on at the same time or one, two, three, four, five, six?
The way, I understand it's all at one time. The way, I understand it's all at one time.
One time.
Uh, one part of that too is the, uh, the corridor study for the perimeter road, um, which is a big part of this, um, as far as the impact. Because from the standpoint of the impact, the perimeter road, that, just that project in itself would alleviate some of the other problems that you're having in town, like truck traffic that's passing through, so.
So we had, we had one study done on the northern route for perimeter road, that would be integrated into this?
Correct, yes, sir.
And do you have funding for it?
I do, we were, uh, Brandon and I were talking, the, what I would suggest is we take it out of the regional T-S plus only because this is gonna have a regional impact. Uh, with Waycross and Ware County being a commercial and retail hub of the eight counties, um, it's one of those things where with, if, for instance, like a perimeter road, um, it's gonna benefit this area regionally, something that me and the chairmen's talked about numbers of times. So I, I think that would be the, the most appropriate place to, to get the funds.
Well, the last study was two thousand, I think you said?
Yes, sir.
And it's past time, it needs to be done, and my, my vote says do it.
I've been going to the regional meeting regular for the last three years. And I know if we don't do this study, we're not gonna get much back from the regional. And if this one cent goes back in again, it's gonna help us. And, and it's gonna be well worth it if we have to do it, pay for all of it. If the city don't go along with it.
My experience in doing this type of work for thirty-four years is you're gonna get more attention from DOT and DCA and the feds if you're a planning community. And, um, Douglas Coffee County has always been successful in that for as long back, as far back as I can remember. And part of that is they, they get these plan, plans put in place, and then they push those plans. And you, you can see that in how they, how they handle things, but that's just been my experience.
Yeah, they base, I guess, so they're basically like taking a more proactive approach to it rather than wait to be reactive, you know?
Right.
Uh, and I've talked with Brandon, if you don't mind, come just a short synopsis of what we talked about this morning. Brandon, don't mind, and he put it pretty much, you know, in labor's term and not engineering term, the way I could really understand what he's talking about. But, uh, one of the things he said is that, what, two thousand and two, I think, was the last one that was done?
Two thousand, I mean.
Huh?
Two thousand, two thousand.
It was two thousand.
And how, how the whole, you know, landscape has changed since that time, i.e., um, even like the trains, and everybody's affected by trains, those trains are longer now. Because I was still working in two thousand and two at the railroad, and now those trains are a mile longer than the ones I used to pull. So it's, it's, a lot of stuff have changed, and, you know, we just got to try to get with it. And, uh, I think one of the things they said back then was that we need that overpass on State Street back in two thousand.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, we, we can't wait till it happens to start trying to react to it, and then sometimes it costs money. But one of the things they're highlighting here is by developing a CTP plan, which is the comprehensive transportation plan, where kind of local transportation projects are, can be eligible to compete for valuable state and federal funding. And when you start talking about these big projects like that, it takes, takes some money to move them.
I'm convinced the DOT will, and federal, will, with a plan, at least they know we're working on it, will start sending more money our way.
Right.
No question, like you just alluded to.
Yep, so.
Well, they, when they, I believe, just like you said, Commissioner Pope, when they see that we're serious, that's when they get serious.
They, they, you know, they, they've got an infrastructure plan in place now, Mr. Chairman, and one of the things they did with that infrastructure plan was to allocate funding from the Federal Highway Administration to go to the local governments. And so what, that is a competitive application process. So we can apply for federal funding, and it would not come through the DOT but go directly to local governments through that program. But one of the, since it's competitive application process, there's, you know, local governments all over the country all applying for these federal funds. So your application is gonna be compared to all the rest of them. This is the kind of data that you can include in those applications that's gonna help you, help your application be looked at and score higher with the, this competitive application process. So that was one of the big benefits I can see with the infrastructure plan we have in place to try to help us get more funds here and where can.
This plan will pay for itself, I'm convinced.
Yeah, if you go to them, uh, meetings over here in the regional, you'll find out what it'll pay for. And you'll find out how much we paid to the regional, don't get nothing back for it.
I know, that's right.
Coffee County has got twenty-seven projects going right now in regional. About us, we got nineteen, I believe. We got four. We pay, and we paying a lot in. And every time I ask them about that, they say, well, y'all don't have a study done.
What, and what's that called, Scott? The, that designation for, uh, be it with the region, plan first?
Yeah, plan first plan.
And so there's those items in there that we talked about, we talked about it a little bit the other day at the retreat, those things that we need to do so that we can have more projects, uh, more grants here in our community.
That's right.
I think if I remember right, at our retreat recently, a couple of weeks ago, that we agreed to prioritize plan first, getting everything that it takes to get designated plan first.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Probably some, someone over in the region conditions would probably be, give us the outline.
There's different items you have to do.
What we have to do in order to try to get that going.
Yeah, how many counties is in that regional?
Eighteen.
Eight?
Eighteen.
Eight? Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, that's what I was thinking, eighteen.
It used to be the, the RDC before the state merged them, oh gosh, almost twenty years ago, was, we had eight.
Yeah.
Eight in our region, Ware County being the central county. And now it expanded, Southern Georgia, Southeast Georgia merged, and it became eighteen counties.
Yeah, and we probably pay, what, seven to nine million dollars a year into that thing?
Let's see, that's about right, yes, sir.
Yeah, anywhere from that range, probably seven to nine million dollars. That goes into, out of Ware County. And we only get four projects. And them grants. Okay. I think this is a good thing to go with that right there, that comprehensive plan. Okay, carry it over. Now, G, drainage pipe upgrade on Lewis Davis Road and McDonald Road. I think Scott had a quote on that, what it was called.
Yes, sir, um, behind the first sheet, uh, is a quotation, uh, quotation from Diamond Concrete Products for the concrete pipe there, and, uh, some pictures and locations for the commission to see. Uh, I had Gene, I asked Gene to make pictures, he's made quite a few there that can explain and, and show what, what the issue is with, with that area and drainage.
There's a lot of water goes down through there. I, I went right out there, stared at him, both of those roads just went over top of him, like we weren't even no pipe there. Got some big canals in there.
Mr. Chairman, before, before I'd like, before I see us spending a whole lot of money, I would like us to do some type of, um, drainage study. Those, those fields are hundreds of acres, and they're putting all their water straight across this dirt road, McDonald Road, and causing the washouts. Um, and then it goes through from what the engineers are saying to Clough Bay Road, um, flooding it. You know, I just think we need to get a little bit of plan before we go do this stuff, doing this.
Well, Jerry, I don't think that, I'm not saying that you're wrong about that, but, uh, these canals is there. They just cleaned them out.
The canals?
They already there, they were already there. And they've got a big blueberry farm in there, and they, and what they've done is cleaned all that land up. Well, it's just automatically created a lot more runoff.
Right, exactly.
It's quick. But ain't never been no pipe down there, and I always just cut it in too, it just cut the road up. And it, all we do is go and haul a load dirty and fill it up. Been doing that for the last ten years.
That was out there a couple of weeks ago, and, um, it looks just like his pictures.
Yeah.
On washout.
That's probably the best thing to do is put some pipes in there.
What's the total cost of us doing that?
I don't know, what do you have on that?
Seventeen thousand.
Yeah.
There's gotta be more than that.
The, uh, oh, you got this?
Road Department gonna put the pipes in?
Yeah, Road Department put them in.
Mr. Chairman, okay, that situation out there, like I say, with the blueberry farm and the roads and all the stuff, and it's created, it's kinda like, in a sense, kinda caused the problem with more runoff, right?
Yeah.
And if that being the case, then are these, the people that has these blueberry farm out there, are they willing to try to help out on this a little bit?
I don't know, they paved their own road down there too, the blueberry plant. And they've increased their tax, they pay a whole lot of taxes.
Yeah, well, I understand all that, but they kinda like create this problem too, right?
No, they didn't create it, though.
Well, prior to...
That problem was there.
Creeks were already there.
That problem was there when the timber was growing on it.
That was having the same problem?
Same problem. It cut that road in two every time you went through there. Every time you went through there, when Mr. Bates owned it. I used to clear land over there to help him.
Because, uh, as I heard Commissioner Samick alluded to, I know with the city, whenever it's issue with the drainage and, you know, have to put pipe in and all, when I was on city council, the policy was that, you know, a lot of times the property owner would pay for the pipe, and then the city would install it, use their labor to install it. So that's why I was asking where they wanted to, you know, try to help contribute a little bit to this effort.
I don't know if they would or not, I ain't asked them. They just will. Every time I turn around, they calling about that road out there.
Well, I'd definitely like to get it done before we pave the road.
Yeah, put the pipe in there, and then when you pave it, you're through with that.
'Cause I don't wanna have to go back and rip up the pavement after we put it down.
Mr. Chairman, is that a road that's on the agenda to be paved?
It is.
Mm, I think it might be.
I think it is.
McDonald, McDonald Road, it is.
Yeah, we did, we had it, Griffin Road.
We definitely did.
All those roads somewhere.
Definitely.
And I guess we also need to look at too, if, I mean, putting the pipe in and all that, like I say, I think that's great, the cement pipe and all that, but is that gonna fix the problem? Are we just fixing that part of it and then causing problem further down the road there somewhere?
Remember what I, what I suggested, that we put these pipe in there like this, and then when the road is paved, even if it's paved, it, that pipe will already be there sufficient for the water.
Right.
And, and it'll be already in, and if we don't, we're gonna pay for it through the contractor. Because if we do, he'll have to put it in. I think, Brandon, would you come up and explain on the drainage part of that road?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Do we need to increase that pipe to forty-eight? And I believe somebody's got three there, and I think I suggested two, but they got three on it. So somebody increased it more than I did.
I was trying to remember...
And so if you do that, you would not have to come back and put a box cover it in or anything then when you went to pave it.
Well, that's my thing, it just...
It would be already done.
Well, that's what, my thing is that once we do it, make sure it's done, we won't have to come back, you know, doing it over, you know, 'cause doing it right costs less than doing it over.
Exactly, what you're talking about, Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay.
One on the...
The two pipes?
It's McDonald Road.
Yes, sir, I think the two pipes, it would be, would be the one that says new pipe and the one that's got the, the two pipes, I think is the location, Mr. Chairman.
Davis Road?
In that Davis, that was Davis Road off to the...
Yeah, that's right.
Two pipes across.
The one that's shaped like an L?
Yeah.
That's what it's Davis.
So I think those, those are the two locations. I think, I think he's trying to show existing there, those pipes.
Mm-hmm.
I think the three is further to the north. And I don't think that, I don't think those pipes are under discussion right now. I think it's just those two we're talking about, William.
That's right, just them two right there, you got the yellow drawing right there on, on his plan.
Yes.
Is that what you're looking at too?
Yes, sir, one, and one of the things we were wanting to look at was like downstream impacts of increasing these pipes and making sure that we're not sending a whole bunch of area into an equal area or a smaller area. I think that was the question that they were trying to mention earlier. We wanna make sure like downstreams are there, you know, you don't wanna send a bunch of big pipes into, like two big pipes if we increase these pipes like we're talking about into two twenty fours or something like that further downstream.
Well, it's going in the swamp there on the right, all, all of this, going into the bay.
It's kinda tricky right in there, Mr. Chairman. It looks like that these blueberries are, are the ridge point, and that it's going in other east direction from that, so that's what we were trying to make sure of with the downstream impacts. We've got everything going the correct way.
The water's going the way you got there.
Yes. And I think that, up there by the two, I think that then turns to the north and goes back in towards Cox Creek.
I don't know where you're talking about now.
Right here.
Where it shows the three yellow pipes?
Yeah.
Doesn't that go into Cox Creek?
Well, that's in that same canal, you got it on into the...
Turns to the north.
Creek, come back around.
Yeah.
What are these two down here?
Across.
Uh, that's down there by Carswell Avenue, that's another cross drain on, uh, McDonald Road.
Yeah.
Just across that.
That's what Wes got new, is that what we're talking about?
No, the one further down.
Further to the south.
He talking about way on over there.
Okay.
That's, oh, okay, over here. But if you go ahead and put those in, it'd probably be money ahead, I think. Then that way, if you pave the road there, you won't never have to do that.
There, there was mentioned...
You'll probably put head walls on it.
Yeah, about water over the road on the Clough Bay Road.
Mm-hmm.
Have you seen that out there, Mr. Chairman?
It stays out there.
The paved portion stays underwater?
Stays underwater.
Is this pipe going, going to that, or is that on the other branch?
Yeah, it goes through there.
Okay.
It all goes, feed that old bay in there.
So that would be, we probably need to look at upsizing those pipes as well.
Probably forty-eight?
But, Mr. Chairman, so the waters go in there anyways downstream. It's just cutting across and running over the top. So the water's still, right now, whatever pipes are downstream, they're handling that water right now as we speak. Correct?
Except for the ones where...
Except for the ones that we need to fix.
Right.
So anything downstream already's done handling that water already. It's just flowing over the road.
And this price?
So what we're, what we're doing here is enlarging them pipes so we can handle it and not get up high enough to go over the road and cut it out.
That would be the goal?
Yes, and so I think anything downstream right now, we, Bob might could look at, maybe enlarging a pipe down there, but that water's already going downstream. It's just going over McDonald Road and cutting it out to get there. So all that water's already going there. So if you had a problem downstream now, or if you don't have a problem downstream now, putting larger pipes in here won't create a problem downstream, shouldn't.
It should.
Because the, the water's already going there.
Right. And the price he gave us, Mr. Brandon, that's for one through eight?
Those are photo numbers.
Okay, but that's for the...
Pipe locations, that's one through eight is done based on these pictures he's got labeled.
Okay.
One...
But the price that he gave us is for, is the ones in the yellow?
It shows ninety-six feet, but I would, I would have to verify the, that, um, pipe sizes and locations. It, the price there is for ninety-six feet of forty-eight inch pipe.
But that's for the ones that are colored yellow?
Yeah.
Is that right?
That's why I would have to verify.
You see them figures right there?
That's all.
Okay, that's what...
That's going over the road, and the pipes ain't...
You see how high they are?
Mm-hmm.
The ditches is way deeper.
Way deeper.
He ain't got enough pipe, where when the water comes up, fills up all the ditch, it starts through the pipe. It's going over the road and all.
Deteriorates the road.
If you put a couple forty-eights in there.
Let it go through?
It'll go through, it'll stay in the ditches. It'll pile up, go over the road all the time.
The seventeen thousand dollar price, is it for the ones in the yellow, or is it for the ones in the white?
Pretty, yeah, yeah. All of it in the yellow.
That's cement pack?
Yeah, that's all CP, but it's...
It's all out there.
It's barely more than ninety-six foot. You gotta have, you're gonna have at least thirty foot of pipe.
These are big commands.
Times two. Now you times three. And I think that this is gonna be a larger...
A wider force.
Right here.
That one is.
Yeah.
What, my question is, is it, that's what I explained? Is that seventeen thousand for this and this, or is it just this? Probably just that.
Is that range, that four inches?
Mr. Brandon, walk up there, please. My question, the seventeen thousand quotation we got? Is that for the pipes that are in the yellow, or is that for the one that's in the white?
The one that says new, I know is gonna be replaced. The other location that I've... The other location that I, that was in question to me was being shown in yellow with the two pipes. But, uh, I have to verify if we're gonna put the double run there and what might have got the two yellow pipes out there. It's not, that's same new.
It just seems like that footage, that's, that's under.
Kind of short.
That's short, ninety-six foot on, what, two crossings, one with three pipes and another with two?
Yeah, that's not, the three pipe crossing, I don't think it's been talked about, it is, I think it's where it says new on the drawing.
So just this one pipe crossing?
And then the other one is on the Lewis Davis Road, I just don't know if he was trying to put the double run there or it was the same.
But this quote, it covers the Lewis Davis and this new.
I have to verify that.
He got ninety-six feet.
Yeah.
That's forty-eight in.
Commissioner Hendricks is saying is that it's.
If.
I don't know, that, that footage just sounded short, and I agree with that, I mean, we're talking about ninety-six feet.
It ain't got, if, if he's showing three pipe there, there.
What length?
That's gonna be a hundred and fifty.
It's so long.
At least.
Who can?
Thirty-two to forty feet for a crossing.
Okay.
Was you gonna put just one line across each one of them?
It looked more like if you was doing thirty-two, then you have three.
It looked like you got three.
Lewis Davis and the same around.
He misrepresenting us right here is what it is. I think everybody's confused and I am a little bit too. You've got three pipes here and two here. And if you're doing forty foot, five to four two hundred, it'd take two hundred feet of that pipe. You ain't got near enough. But I figured you're doing one line on each one of them. Is that what it's supposed to be, Scott?
I thought so too, now that you've mentioned that, yes, sir.
It's supposed to be one single line, only.
Cause you've got the exist.
Yeah, one forty-eight.
Cause you got some already existing.
We taking these two.
So you're just gonna put a bigger one in with the ones that are already existing.
The pipe you got out there now is twenty-four inch metal.
Twenty-four.
So you're duck, basically doubling the size of the pipe.
Well, no, if you go from a twenty-four, I mean, to a forty-eight, it's more than a double when you're doing circumference.
Oh, yeah, well, I'm just saying as far as.
Probably are better. If I'm not doing my math, but if I'm aware. It's, it's a lot more than that.
It's the area.
Area.
Uh, or square.
Right. Two twenty fours won't do what a forty-eight will do.
No.
It probably triples it, don't it?
Yes, sir.
The volume. So what we saying is probably we're gonna put one line of pipe across each spot. Is what I suggested that we do.
The only thing that's throwing me off is this map there, that's why I just.
Yeah, I don't know who did the map, who did that?
Uh, Gene.
Is he here?
Is Gene here? What's he coming up with? I mean, we don't need three pipes in it, I, I don't know why we, I wasn't looking at that.
I'll have to verify that before the meeting.
But I think he's just meaning one pipe on each one of them.
And so is the, the distant pipe from the state? And we're gonna add one or they're gonna come out?
They're gonna come out, they're building, they're resting down, that's part of the problem.
Forty-eight. Forty-eight.
Now more water.
Take two twenty fours out for one forty-eight.
It'll take four.
See, my thing is just like you say, I mean, you should talk about three pipes right here. And the two right here, is that three forty-eight?
Can you figure that out that quick, what it is?
That's a whole lot more than.
It'd take more than.
Oh, yeah.
Probably take three.
And I think that is just.
Twenty-four is better.
Yeah, well, three times thirty-two is ninety-six.
Eighty. Yeah.
So you can do three thirty-two foot runs for, you, ninety-six feet.
With the forty-eight inch pipe.
With the forty-eight inch pipe.
I think you're gonna do two, you're gonna do them wide enough for the road, if it's paved forty, you gotta have forty foot.
Michael mentioned one, one line for each location.
One line, that's what it is. And then you'll be down to your ninety-six foot then.
Right. Why don't we just do all four locations instead of just three of them?
There's a.
While we're there, Brandon, what's your thought on that?
Do the other one down over the.
Yes, sir.
The other areas.
We'll have to do, do some looking and some measuring there, that other.
I think I would do it, and I would get.
I mean, there's.
Cause that watershed's gonna always come out of there, it's gotta come out that field.
Well, that water had, I mean, that road hadn't been paved yet. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna fix the road by paving it, why don't we just go ahead and fix the, the water issue now before we pave it?
Right, let me go check on those links we got.
Okay. We can carry it over. Let's just carry it over then, Brandon, we're gonna go on. Okay, alcohol license. Request.
Hey, Jimbo, can you cover this one? Please, sir?
James.
Uh, this is a request by Eric Guy, who is, uh, constructing that new, um, Blue Beach Hall on, uh, the corner of eighty-two, Russell Highway and Solos Trail.
Yeah.
He's requesting to sell beer, wine, and liquor when, uh, when he opens. So, um, he doesn't have any disqualifiers. And, uh, custom meats is a promise that kind of looks.
It's gonna be a pool hall.
Pool hall, yes, sir. It's the new bu- metal building that was built down that corner.
Okay.
You say he's up to par on everything? No disqualification?
He meets all the, meets all the specifications, everything.
It, it'll be similar to, um, uh, the one in Blackshire, uh, on, if you go out, the Blue Shop Center there on the right, you're similar to that.
It'll, it'll be a nicer place, it won't be, you know.
No smoking inside, so we'll be out back from, okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. You got any questions, Ron?
Nothing. Hold on.
You got nothing? I'll carry it over. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Okay, County Manager, report.
Um, the only thing I have is, we had an item out on the last meeting in February, um, that was missing a second on the motion, so I'll, I'll add that to the agenda for the regular meeting to get that squared away and get it, um, get it formalized with that second. It was on the, the non-aeronautical, um, facility leases.
Didn't have a second on, okay.
That's it, I just want to point that out.
The, uh, commission and move it over, okay.
Yep.
All right, any com- uh, commission comment?
Just like the, welcome Commissioner Hawkins to the wall zone.
Commissioner Hendricks. Hendricks.
What did I, what did I say?
You said Hawkins. Just call me whatever you want.
Okay. Let him on board.
Thank you, thank you, it's glad to be here.
Yep.
I've got one thing, Mr. Chairman. Uh, has to do with employees, and I'd like to go into executive session at one time during the regular meeting, or at the end of the regular meeting, go into executive session. It deals directly with an employee.
With an individual. Can we do that?
Are you saying you'd like to now, or you wanna wait till the meeting?
Wait till the meeting.
Okay, at the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting.
Okay. All right. Any more comment?
Chairman, I'd like to, um, y'all give consideration to putting on the, um, next agenda to, um, I would, I would like to make a motion that we, um, give the engineering department permission to go ahead and do surveying and on Cornelius Road, um, and get, get that started, just the surveying. Y'all agree?
With that wonderful, we talked about it, it's a true.
Mm-hmm.
And, okay, cause I know we talked about two or three different roads.
And also, also, um, Pascal Road.
That's what I was about to say, we mentioned that Pascal.
We mentioned both of those at the retreat.
Get that process started.
Go ahead and get that motion.
And we won't put Griffin Road.
Come our agenda.
As Brandon, well, Brandon stepped out, we'll remind him of it when he gets back.
Yep, go and get the surveying done, find out what we're gonna have to do, it's right away and all that and.
To acquire right away.
We had several of them that need to be put on there.
Let's get us two right now, that's my mo- that would be my motion.
And, uh.
I would second that.
Mr. Chair?
Let's put a. We'll have to escort, put them on there, but have a list of the ones we're gonna try to put on there.
Could you do that for us, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, we, we had a list, and I think at the retreat, if I'm, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, but we had, um, Pascal and Cornelius Road is to go ahead and get those surveyed and get those done.
Right.
Yep.
And the Wadley Road was on it too.
We're gonna set those two roads.
No, we're gonna go with more than that. If we can. We're gonna pave them roads. We've been getting, we're gon- we're gonna pave some of these other roads too. We, we ain't gonna stop with this. Every time I come, that's what you wanna do, is do the ones you wanna do, and that's it. Leave everybody else out, but we ain't gonna have that. We're gonna put Pascal, Griffin Road, and all of them on there. The Wadley Road too, Jerry, we ain't gonna just have what you want, every time, can't do that. That's the way you try to win it, but we ain't gonna do that.
They started.
We're gonna put them all on there, then we'll see whether we get it or we don't get it. You fair with that?
I'm fair with that.
Yeah, that's good.
I just wanna make sure we put Pascal and Cornelius.
Wadley Road. Griffin Road.
While we're there at Pascal, we're right there at Wadley.
We're gonna put them all on there.
We're right there at Slash Pine, we're right there at Banks.
Let's have them all put on there.
The area.
Or none at all.
While we're in the area, we'll get done what we need to get done.
Let's do it.
Okay. All right, any more on that?
Mr. Leonard? You got in?
No, my position hate. Get some, get some roads done.
Let's get some roads paved.
Get the roads paved.
We, we, these people paying taxes out there, they gonna pay the road paid, they tired of waiting through this mud and water, and all of us sitting up here. Won't argue about that, I ain't having that, let's go with it. pave a road.
We've got five lists we're working on now.
Yeah, not just picking one out because you want him to vote for you, or somebody else, let's get it all.
I'm ready to vote.
Amen. Okay, any more comment? I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Meeting adjourned. We'll be back.
Public hearing.
Let's take twenty minutes.
No, we got a public hearing.
Public hearing.
Ten minutes, okay, we got a public hearing.
This shouldn't be that long on it.
About ten minutes.
Let's take about ten minute break, we'll come back.